... Roll call please.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin. Councilwoman Queston.
Here.
Councilwoman Torres.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Here.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Here.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Here.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Here.
President, order.
Here. This is the regular meeting of the City Council Incorporated Annual Notice of 2014, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the local board on September 27, 2013, sent to the Star Ledger, and home review all complies with provision of the Republican means law of New Jersey. This time, the asking will be brought up by Councilwoman Torres, who leads the federal legislature.
Almighty God, as we legislate for our community, we make strong efforts to justice and fair play for being all that we do. Above all, I would see that you will hold it. Give us the strength to follow regardless of what you mean to say.
I always believe in the United States of America, and to be a part of the forces stands by one nation, and by our individual liberty and justice overall.
This time, open the floor to call speaking in the audience wishing to address the city council two stations in the area for the record and five minutes.
Reverend Kirk, from the city, I would like to require an ordinance, this is a first reading, ordinance number 4498, to amend Chapter 76, Article 07 of the article of the city, which is the town's government control, specifically to prohibit speeding and travel acts.
Let's move to the agenda. Record. Anyone else wishing to address the council? CNN, I close out portion of the record.
Ordinance number 4459, authorize the adoption of a bond order in the city man, fine a few dollars for the down payment of $250,000 for the resurfacing barriers where it is.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4459, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on ordinance 4459? CNN, I close out portion of the record.
Ordinance number 4494, authorize the adoption of capital ordinance in the amount of $850,000 for the replacement of three ambulances at $250,000 each, and the replacement of a ambulance patient compartment in the amount of $100,000.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4494, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on ordinance 4494? CNN, I close out portion of the record.
Ordinance number 4495, authorize the execution of a site access agreement with GeoWorks Consulting LLC, LLC in New Jersey, to complete soil borers at Copniki Playground located at 128-142 Fulton Street, in connection with possible contaminants migrating onto playground property from steel break polishing quarter Franklin Street.
Heard reading of ordinance 4495, any member of the audience wishing to address the council on ordinance number 4495? CNN, I close out portion of the record.
Ordinance number 4496, authorize the adoption of capital ordinance in the amount of $400,000 for sidewalk and drainage improvements at various city properties.
Heard reading of ordinance 4496, attorney member of the audience wishing to address the council on 4496? CNN, I close out portion of the record. It said that my colleagues will dispense reading of these communications and reports to civil officers. We're going to move on to ordinances on the first reading, which will be at page seven.
Ordinance number 4497, in Chapter 10.12, we can do code in city, though has been entitled for the returns on red signals specifically to include Porter Street in the area.
Heard reading of ordinance 4497, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4498 has been removed from tonight's agenda. Ordinance number 4499, and ordinance to vacate a portion of Brighton Street from Pulaski Street to Old Place, and ordinance with keys abound required for the construction of a new elementary school.
Heard reading of ordinance 4499, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to encourage and ask my colleagues to support the vacation of the street to this goal, and any work education to build a school there for our students that is very much needed. But I also like to make it aware the residents in that area that there will be difficulty with some parking in the area because when they build a school, there's only a limited number of parking spaces that will be built with the staff. From my understanding, there will be approximately an additional sixty vehicles that will not park on the street because there is not sufficient parking for the faculty to help come to the new school. But I encourage my colleagues to support this, and thank you, Mr. President.
Any ones? I know that this is a tough issue because of the balancing of education and creating new schools, but at the same time, it's going to be a hindrance to those who live in the neighborhood with parking situations. I just hope it all works out. Hopefully, the faculty can try to work on some sort of car posts so that some of the extra cars coming into the neighborhood. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye. Ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4501, grants an encroaching permit to our Kishuas, Newton, Pennsylvania, for one environmental work consisting of three groundwater monitoring wells within the public right of way of Elizabeth Avenue 63, inside hog area adjacent to 600 miles of that.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4500, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye. First reading.
The first word? Ordinance number 4501, 4502, 4503, and 4504. It's to authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking spaces for 438 Fulton Street, 206 Clark Place, 319 South Hard Street, and 164 Standish.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4501, 4502, 4503, 4504, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4505, rescinding ordinance number 4347, adopted November 27, 2012, to authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for George Martinez 10 South Fifth Street.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4505, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4506, rescinding ordinance number 3606, adopted March 23, 2004, which authorizes the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Armando F. Ferrera 249.
Heard reading of ordinance 4506, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading. Public hearing for consideration, board moving on, ordinances shall take place. City council needs to be held Tuesday, October 28, 7:30.
Ordinance. Ordinance number 448, authorize the adoption of two utility bond ordinance in the amount not to exceed five million four hundred thousand dollars to finance the city's capital assessment in respect of the joint meeting of assets and union counties.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4480, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye. Ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4507, authorize the adoption of capital ordinance in the amount of $450,000 for demolition of the Polish home located at 607 627 Pulaski Street.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4507, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. President, yeah, I'd like to ask my colleagues to support this capital ordinance so that they can remove the Polish home that's there. As you know, this is part of the process, supposed to create a field there so we can have more recreation for our youth here in St. Elizabeth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good job, Councilman. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4508, authorize the adoption of capital ordinance in the amount of $750,000 for the purchase of emergency generators for the Peterstown Community Center and Stevenson Sampson Senior Center.
Heard reading of ordinance 4508, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4509, authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of $2,500,000, with a down payment of $125,000 for the renovation of the Mickey Walker Center and purchase of a natural gas orderless generator to power the entire building.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4509, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I was happy to see that this was moving forward and asked my colleagues to please support me on this. The renovation of the Mickey Walker Center is so dear indeed, and also, that's why I had those emergency generators there. Hope that we never get hit with another storm, such as the day with Hurricane Sandy. Hope we never get hit with that again, but at least we'll be prepared, better prepared this time around, that we do get hit with that and that we have someplace that our citizens can go and be there for you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good job, Councilman. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4510, authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of $500,000 for the force of engineering and construction of the Trumples Street flood control project.
Heard reading of ordinance 4500, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, once again, Dr. Galvin. Thank you, Mr. President. This is what we wanted to tell you, Mr. President. As you know, a few years ago, we failed to build a nice firehouse down here, turned back off Trumples Street, but every time it rained, it always flooded, so you cannot get through that area, and the remaining earth we had run back and forth to the mall, New Jersey, by the way. But the improvement that took place in this area, not only with the immediate flood condition that the homes in that area go back and flood out, just in case it ever raining again, but it also will be able to follow the fire jet through that area, not run all the way back downtown and come around upon this side. So there's going to be a question, improvement, Mr. President, admiration, my colleagues, please support me on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. I can tell you, I remember this area flooding over the last few years, and I can tell you, I think this project will definitely be flooding the area a lot safer to the residents than from floods, but also from possibly a flood or fire. So it's a great job, again, this administration's performance. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading. Public hearing for consideration, board moving on, ordinances shall take place. City council needs to be held on Wednesday from 12, 2014, at 7:30 p.m. Now, we're going to move on to the ordinances on final passage. Do I have a motion to remove from the table ordinance 447? Vocal. Move then, have Councilwoman Queston, third second. Second, have Councilwoman Galvin. Councilwoman, motion.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye.
Ordinance number 4473, and ordinance to vacate a portion of Henry Street between Julian Street and Paramount Avenue, particularly described in the city of Elizabeth County, Union State of New Jersey.
Heard reading of ordinance 4473, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4494, authorize the adoption of capital ordinance in the amount of $850,000 for the replacement of three ambulances at $250,000 each, and the replacement of a ambulance patient compartment in the amount of $100,000.
Heard reading of ordinance 4494, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4495, authorize the application of a site access agreement with GeoWorks Consulting LLC in New Jersey, to complete soil borers at Copniki Playground located at 128-142 Fulton Street, in connection with possible contaminants migrating onto playground property from steel break polishing corporation, 127 Brighton Street.
Heard reading of ordinance 4495, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4496, authorize the adoption of capital ordinance in the amount of $400,000 for sidewalk and drainage improvements at various city properties.
Heard reading of ordinance 4496, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed on final. Now, my last question, Mrs. President.
Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2015 capital budget in the amount of $9,200,000. In compliance with state fiscal year 2014 appropriations act, city council was requested to approve all payments related to accumulating uncompensated access benefits. Introduce and approve the Midtown Business Special Improvement District calendar year 2014 budget in the amount of $226,000.
Heard reading of the resolutions, what is your pleasure?
Resolution for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, resolution passed. Public hearing for consideration, this resolution will be held Wednesday in the number 12, 2014.
Authorize the following of an application to the local finance board to participate in the New Jersey Department of Environmental Trust financing program to finance the city's capital assessment in respect of the joint meeting of the SFS and Union Counties in the amount of $5.4 million. Confirm the reappointment of Honorable Daniel J. Russell to serve as temporary judge in the municipal court for a term of one year commencing November 1, 2014, to October 31, 2015, in the amount not to exceed $60,000. Confirm the reappointment of Mr. George L. Elizabeth to serve as a member of the Elizabeth Parking Authority for five-year term effective October 6, 2014. Permit the purchasing agent to make the necessary arrangements from propertymove.com to auction and pound and property in possession of the Elizabeth Police Department.
Heard reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Move the orders for a vote.
Move then second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Galvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President, order.
Aye, ordinance passed.
Authorize the void of contract to the agency of London, London Eagle, to the agent of record customer state agency and local codes from Jersey for a policy of insurance coverage of the city's foreclosed properties for the period October 1, 2014 to October 1, 2015, at an annual premium of $4,508. Authorize the void of contract to the judge of group of insurance companies on Park New Jersey through the agent of record customer state agency and local codes from Jersey to provide insurance coverage city-owned properties for the period October 1, 2014 to October 1, 2015, at an annual premium of $135,918. Authorize the renewal of contract with Hydro Service Corporation Elizabeth for the furnishing of towing and road services for municipal vehicles for a one-year period with an option to renew for two or three years commencing October 14, 2014, and of course not to exceed of course not to exceed thirty thousand dollars per year. Authorize a void contract to absolute protective systems Edison, New Jersey for the maintenance of fire sprinkler stand pipes and fire pong systems for various building under Mars County property purchasing contract for the period September twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen through December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen and of course not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Authorize the void of contract to manage and touch construction company named Keyport, New Jersey for repairs and maintenance of plumbing systems at various city owned buildings under the Middlesex Regional Education Service Commission Co-op for the period November twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen through June four, two thousand fifteen and of course not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Authorize the void of contract to Pitten Bowes, Inc., Union, New Jersey for the furnishing of posted equipment maintenance and postage supplies for the period October fifteen, two thousand fourteen through September thirty, two thousand fifteen and of course not to exceed two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Authorize the void of contract to Jess, Southern, South Pointfield, New Jersey for the purchase of two John Tier six twenty-four K voters under the Middlesex Regional Education Service Commission Co-op as replacements with Department of Public Works at a total cost of three hundred sixty thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars ninety-nine cents. Resent the resolution adopted July twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, authorize the execution of agreement with the Elizabeth Climate Authority for the rental of parking spaces in lot number six and lot number two for a one-year at a total cost of ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars and execute a new agreement with the Elizabeth Parking Authority for the rental of twenty-five parking spaces in lots number six and three hundred parking spaces in lot number two at a rate of fifty dollars per parking space per month for a three-year period effective July one, two thousand fourteen through June thirty, two thousand seventeen at a total of five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
I'm reading the resolution, what's your question?
Always best on both of them.
Move in second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Corporal.
Aye, resolution passed. Any motion to move to table, next resolution? So, Mr. President, move by Councilman Gonzalez, your second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Torres, vocal and motion.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Corporal.
Aye, always best on final.
Details of the name, East Grand and Vincent LLC is the redevelopment of the Trumpal Street Supermarket property located at eight oh one eight seventy-one Livingston Street. Resent the resolution adopted September nine, two thousand fourteen, appointing John C. Riley Esquire to serve as confirmation counsel for the acquisition of seventy-five thirty-seven West Jersey Street due to a conflict with the law firm Rebound Road and Out and appoint Mr. Riley as confirmation counsel for the acquisition of the property of three hundred three twenty-eight Atlantic Street, a mall previously approved six oh one Bond Street under the same terms and conditions.
I'm reading the resolution, what's your question?
Always best on both of them.
Move in second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Corporal.
Aye, resolution passed.
Authorize the tax collector to cancel refund for the middle rebilling of taxes on the property located at ten twenty-three East Grand Street for tax year two thousand fourteen in the amount of three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars sixty-six cents. Determine that the city of Elizabeth foreclosed by summary proceedings in grand as provided in the In Grand foreclosure act, the tax sales certificates held by the city is delineated on list number one by the tax collector. Determine that the city of Elizabeth foreclosed by summary proceedings in grand as provided in the In Grand foreclosure act, tax sales certificates held by the city is delineated on list number two by the tax collector. Authorize the expenditure of thirty-five thousand forty dollars to the Elizabeth Board of Education for custodial security and bustard system for sore summer program utilizing Nicholas Murray Butler School twenty-three for the period July seven, two thousand fourteen through August fifteen, two thousand fourteen. Amend the resolution adopted April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen with NJMS Global Tuberculosis Institute at Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey for the two thousand fourteen Elizabeth Tuberculosis Health Services Program specifically to change the name to New Jersey Medical School Global Tuberculosis Institute at Rutgers via medical and health sciences. Authorize Congress City officials to enter into agreement with King University to provide warrant students eligible for the federal work study program to perform work-related duties at sort of the Boston City. Authorize Congress City officials to competitively contract for the purpose of selecting a license and qualified partner to provide for the administration of records relating to foreclosed abandoned properties within city limits for a trial period of six months. Amend the resolution adopted November twelve, two thousand thirteen, authorize an agreement with the Elizabeth Conservancy for the demolition of a foundation and other structures to start construction on the agency's city garden specifically to extend determined contract to December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen due to delays raised in the environmental review. Amend the resolution adopted August twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, authorizing the Elizabeth Development Company to construct a handicap walkway at the New Point World Campus or Trinitas Met Ball Center on the north side of Livingston Street specifically to extend the term of the contract to December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen due to contractual delay in stardust. Amend the resolution adopted October twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Authorize the Elizabeth Development Company to construct the Shiloh Home Care's project as an educational center for African-American culture specifically to extend the term of the contract to December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen due to contractual delay in change order with no additional funds required. Authorize Congress City officials to competitively contract for the demolition of pre-existing structures on two hundred two thirty-eight South Second Street Parcels. Establish names for the removal and disposal of debris on properties listed on schedule lay-out filed by the City Board's Office in a total amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars seventeen cents.
I'm reading the resolution, what's your question?
Always best on both of them.
Move in second, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Corporal.
Aye, always best on final.
Authorize the state owned city owned properties and public auction to be held December nine, two thousand fourteen at six thirty P M in city hall council chambers. Authorize the void of contract to Hyco Plan Solutions Inc., Berkeley, California for the Western Interceptor Cleaning and Close Circuit TV Inspection Project between Clarkson Avenue and Trent Avenue Pump Station at a cost of six hundred sixty-seven thousand ninety-two dollars. Authorize the void of contract to A and M Associates, Middleton, New Jersey to provide civil engineering services on a ton material basis in connection to the demolition of eight twenty-three East Jersey Street, the former Wood utility garage at a cost not to exceed ninety thousand nine hundred five dollars plus reimbursable. Authorize the acceptance of the donation in the amount up to twenty thousand seven dollars for repairs and improvements at Kellogg Park from the J.C. Kellogg Foundation. Adopt a resolution in support of the New Jersey Department of Transportation recommending a new passing zone on Route four thirty-nine in the city of Elizabeth. Authorize Congress City officials to request the New Jersey Department of Transportation to perform traffic signal upgrades at the intersection of Moore Avenue with Waverly Place with the city of the twenty-five percent of the total cost. Delete the following empty air parking spaces from in front of the premises located at two twenty-three Mall Place and four fifty-two South Broad Street. Adopt a resolution in support. Appeal court ruling that former Elizabeth school superintendent Pablo Munoz and the former Elizabeth Board of Education president Rafaela Marde must reimburse the school district sixty-three thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars on defamation loss due. Authorize settlement of workers' compensation litigation matter of Santos versus City of Elizabeth in total amount of thirty-seven thousand two hundred nine dollars sixty cents paid utility bills.
I'm reading the resolution, what's your question?
Always best on both of them.
Move in second, any comments? Mr. President. Councilman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the administration for being proactive and looking to take care of our infrastructure by putting forward a resolution to clean the Western Interceptor system between Causton Avenue and Trent Avenue, which is in the second world, as you know, and many of us know that's a flood zone everywhere, rains a great deal. It's important for water to be able to flow through that pipe without any instructions or whatever. From what I understand, when they did a review of that pipe, it was close to fifty percent flow seven, and that's what that does is it blocks and it needs water to be able to flow as quickly as it can, particularly when it rains a lot, like I said, the water needs to flow from outside of the street and into the building. So I want to thank the administration and actually support of my colleagues in this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Calum.
Today I was at the recycle center right behind, there were a crew of about three or four people cleaning up the entire side of the green, uh, whatever, I mean, uh, grass, trees and whatever, it looked so beautiful. I never saw the area behind the recycle center, they're cleaning up, they did such a great job. Apparently it must be part of this particular contract also, you know, further up on the, on Atlantic Street. And it looks much better, give a better chance for your members to be able to go by and see what a great job it was done, actually, it was, you know.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I like the, uh, and the, uh, the resolutions in support of the, you know, the, uh, the appeal ruling for the, for the, uh, former Elizabeth Board of Education superintendent Munoz and blah, 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 we have a agenda. Well, I did some research and for the information for everybody, the money part in the extra account, Mr. President, and there are two people that actually started this to go through to whatever, to clear upon a, uh, the issue that sent the lesson and this, and this, uh, company partnership winner. So if they do the right thing, as supposed to be doing, this should not be even to be on their agenda. You know, money was returned back, it was in the extra account. So all due respect to sponsor of this resolution, I can support because they returned the money to the children of Elizabeth and it's in the Board of Education's extra account. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I wasn't going to say anything, so I think the resolution speaks for its stopping, number one. Number two, I think that I explained clearly the good counsel we, uh, the reasonable recommendation in this resolution. I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed, uh, with the councilman, councilman position. Five to the matter raised, and I also, I took, um, extensive research, five to the matter raised, and more than a year ago, I judged order that this money be paid to the Elizabeth Board of Education. On September of this year, we, uh, Commissioner Rafaela Marde stated in public that he didn't have money, that the attorneys don't have money. And if the attorney should not have money, the money belongs to the children of the city of Elizabeth. That money can be returned to the Board of Education. Yes, counsel is correct, the money is in some extra account somewhere because obviously someone is waiting to see whether or not they get away without paying. The court didn't say that the attorneys working for the court should pay this money. The court was very clear by saying the former superintendent Pablo Munoz and former board of attorney Rafaela Marde were responsible for paying this money because they basically legally utilized the board attorneys for one person's innocence. So yeah, I love to say it somewhere, but the money does not leave the children of Elizabeth. And that's why I introduced the resolution last time. And I think it should also be repeated, and I said this last time, last week, that Board of Education commissioners in the minority, obviously, aside from previous, shall be granted, to stay here, tried to introduce a resolution, exactly indicating what this resolution states, that the money belongs to the children. And to my surprise, not only was it nine, six to three, but Rafaela Marde was also late in the evening, so what, in this case, it became a system of three. So I agree with you, it's a shame, uh, time, cutting the financial services, uh, time when we're reducing teacher assistance in the classes, that we have sixty-six thousand dollars, that we could hire at least two teachers assistants without money. And the money is in something out of control by some attorney, but not in the hands of the children of Elizabeth. And that's why I hope and asking my colleagues to support this resolution because basically it sends a message that we are in support of the children of this great city and we do not want anyone to get away and not be something that's ordered by a superior judge more than a year ago.